That's me, Gaston City Council, and I come to order, and the chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Present.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and the meeting is open for business. I'll ask Brian Harbison to come forward and lead the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you for today, we thank you for life, for your blessings on us, and as we prepare to celebrate Memorial Day, God, we just ask your blessings on our servicemen and women around the world, wherever they are. God, we just thank you for their protection of us, and we just pray that you'll just bless them today, be with our leaders here this morning, give them the wisdom and knowledge and courage that they need to make the right decisions. Thank you for your blessings on us, and we'll give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wahegum.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting on April the 17th, May the 17th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of May the 13th through the 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor. We have David Puttman, who would like to make a special presentation. Would he please come forward?
Morning.
David Puttman, representing the local firefighter, 454. Most of you know, we've, for the last several years, have had a golf tournament that has been for raising money for Muscular Dystrophy Association. We did that again this year, and even in trying financial times, we're proud today to present a check for $8,559.64. Ms. Christian Chesser from MDA is here to accept this check, and she's got just one word.
Hi, everyone, I'm Christian. I am the fundraising coordinator for the Muscular Dystrophy Association for North Alabama. We cover every county in North Alabama, Coleman, all the way up Tennessee. We offer free clinic, free flu shots to our children. In a month, we're actually going to have MDA Summer Camp, which is a really integral part of everything that we do. We're going to try to get the fire department to actually come down and see the kids and see, you know, what this money goes towards. We definitely appreciate Gaston Fire Department. They are consistently one of the top fire departments in North Alabama. Every year, they raise anywhere from $18,000 to $20,000 a year, which is amazing, considering, especially, like you said, financial times, the economy and things like that, and especially with the tornadoes almost a month ago, you know. We really do appreciate all their hard work and your continued support. It means a lot to us and our families. Thank you.
Unfinished business, we have none to date. Number 10, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance amending City Code Section 130 to 357 regarding removal of signs at fireworks sales locations. This ordinance requires that signs related to fireworks business be at a temporary or fixed facility must be removed within 30 days of the end of each firework session. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? The ordinance was presented today for the first reading, the council will vote on it next week. Eleven, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1819 Eisenhower Street, District 5. The last known owner is Timothy Lynn Sutherland. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in July of last year. There have been no improvements to the property. As you can tell in the picture, the property is not being maintained at all. There are no permits to approve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 10 Cabot Avenue in District 6. The last known owners are Joan, Mrs. Sam- Sammy Rich- Richards, Kathy, Mrs. Larry Ledbetter, Brenda, Mrs. Billy Boynt, Billy Morris Nance Jr., Jamie Nance, Wells Fargo Financial Alabama Incorporated, and City Financial Corporation LLC. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in May of 2010. There have been no improvements to the property. As you can tell in the picture, this property also is not being maintained, and there are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this resolution? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
13 through 18, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct public hearings, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for demolition and grass cutting, which has already been performed. We have six locations. I'm going to read the names and addresses, and anyone who wishes to speak about any of these may come forward. 13 is 620 Turnetown Avenue in District 5, $6,126.03 for demolition, Wendell L. Jolly and Mortgage Electronic Registration Systems Incorporated, on behalf of lender Homecoming Finances Network Incorporated. 14169 Brookwood Drive, District 1, $451 for grass cutting. State of Alabama Property Tax Division and Leslie Pruitt. 15901 Avenue G, District 3, $676 for grass cutting. Justin Scott Chipman and the State of Alabama Property Tax Division. 16 is 611 Leaning Avenue in District 3, $211 for grass cutting. Daniel J. Seismode. 1010 Fairview Avenue in District 6, $241 for grass cutting. State of Alabama Property Tax Division. 515 Pearl Street, District 6, $811 for grass cutting. Juanita Griffin Faulkner and the State of Alabama Property Tax Division. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Anybody who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all six resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I see Mr. Ashley is back there. John, can you give me a schedule as to when you're going to be over in our area, because I'm getting a lot of calls again? I know you're moving around.
I'll be in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
That's next day.
For the people out there with the grass cutting problems, and like I said, I've been getting a lot of calls, and I know we've been having a lot of rain, now the sun is shining, you know.
True.
It's just a major problem for this city. We discussed today upstairs, Mayor, to look at some of these properties that we're putting these liens against, and probably go into some of these property owners close to them and see if we can't get them to take those liens and start cutting that property as opposed to the city. I didn't add this all up, but I'm sure this is pretty close. Well, if you want to do the house demolition, you're probably talking pretty close to $10,000 that we're spending if you want to add that house demolition into it. But we need to come up with some type of program, and I think you might be working on that.
I've got that sort of lined up, probably in about a week or two weeks. We got somebody that had a little in CDBG money for abatement stuff, and we're going to find somebody who knows how to look the plaits up and get them all handled for us probably in just a few weeks.
Good.
So we'll have a list of what we own, what we got liens against, what the state owns.
And hopefully, the citizens will adhere to that and come in, maybe purchase those lots next to them, and they can keep them up, and they don't have to worry the city about cutting the grass and what have you, they just keep it cut because it'll be their property.
That's right.
Yeah.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all six resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all six resolutions.
Our final public hearing is a resolution petitioning Edgewood County Commission for Approval of Medical Waste Facility. Environmental Biological Services plans to purchase a medical waste sterilizer and boiler system to recycle and sterilize waste at a facility. Pardon me. 2318 East Broad. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is anyone who wants to speak in favor? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
20 is a resolution authorizing change order to contract with Super Products International dot group and repealing Resolution R. 12411. This is regarding the CSX Railroad Bridge coating project. The amount is $1,743 for the removal of obsolete utility structures atop the railroad bridge. This also repeals a change order that was mistakenly approved for Acaris Industrial Painting and Contract. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
What utility poles was up there? I can't remember.
There were some old, like, power line poles.
Telegraphed.
Any of them, they were unsightly, and we understood that the contractor was going to take them down, but it turned out that someone else took them down, so we were going to make sure we paid the right person.
Yeah, but I-
Anyway, they were unsightly, I'm glad they got them.
I thought they were unsightly, I was intending to ask that question upstairs, what utility poles were they, because they were, they didn't look like utility poles. They could have been telegraphed, like you said. It was from some old stuff.
Very old.
Any other discussion?
Okay.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
21 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Crescent Moon Entertainment. This is for entertainment of Grove Addiction at the Amphitheater on Friday, August the 5th, in the amount of $2,500. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
That's part of First Friday on August the 5th, right?
Yes. Any other?
Is that the last, is that the last Friday that we'll have entertainment at the amphitheater?
No, it's going all the way through September.
We go through September?
Last year, we did one in October, the weather was still real good.
I mean, I know they do the First Friday, but I don't know if they did the concert though, at the amphitheater is the question. Okay.
And these are free concerts, and some of them are very good, so.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
22 is a resolution authorizing agreement with 2012 Trailer Life Directory. This is for advertising of Nakalula Falls Campground, and the amount is $9,218. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have one document that I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. This document, resolution, is a resolution authorizing, establishing rental rates for various facilities of the Parks and Recreation Department. And this only pertains to the amphitheater, down here, the sign at the amphitheater, and the rental rates for the theater, Pittman Theater.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Mr. President, I have one. This is an ordinance approving amendment to number four, to the letter of credit for reimbursement agreement. I would ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Okay, I'd ask for passage.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, this is our letter of credit that we've had for, well, I guess it's the fourth time, I guess, that we renewed it. Several projects that we were doing down by the airport and those areas, I forget exactly, I think the original was about $6 million, somewhere in that neighborhood.
$10 million.
Was it $10 million? Was it 10 or 6?
6.
About, yeah, I thought it was 6, yeah, 6.5 million originally. And we've used this money to do several projects and what have you. This is just to renew it, and it's with Wells Fargo Bank. I think we got a pretty good rate again, so time to go with it.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business? Department reports, committees, boards, citizens request Billy Busby on youth issues. Is he here?
No.
Is he? Ms. Geto is at the work, and she's not here either.
G. Tom.
G. Tom?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, she's not here.
She's not here.
Okay, remarks by the mayor and the council. Ben, you want to start?
Well, this coming Monday at 10 o'clock, the Gaston Edward Warren Patriots Association will be observing Memorial Day at Nakalula Park at the War Memorial. So we'd love to have all of you come up and have a good talk. So a lot of people come every year, and it's a stirring and it's a moving time up there. So y'all be sure and come. Also, we're in hopes that a World War II vintage P-51, or for your younger people, an F-51 will probably make a flyover, and we're hoping for that. We think it's going to become a reality. So y'all be sure and come on up, okay? That's all.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind everyone to be safe next coming Monday, Memorial Day, just have a, just a safe and happy Memorial Day. That's all I have.
I read something very disturbing in the paper here a few days ago. There's about 5 million people in the United States that are bitten by dogs every year. A thousand people per day in the United States go to the emergency room for dog bites. Summer's coming on, the kids are going to be out playing. We've got a lease law, the dog should not be running free, it should be in a pen or on a lease at all times. Just reminding people that we do have a law, and I'm going to be pushing for animal control to maybe beef up their forces if we have to this summer, to get the stray dogs off the street, because after one has killed a child, it's too late then. So just want to remind everybody, if you have an animal and you carry anything about the animal, you keep it on a lease or you keep it pinned. And also remind you that we do have a city ordinance that says if you walk your dog through the neighborhood, that you carry a container to clean up after that dog. So those are some things that's, and if you violate that, you're breaking the law. Just a turn reminder to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Mr. President. Everybody's talking about Memorial Day weekend, but there's something else going on this coming Friday, is this high school graduation, Gaston City High School. So we want to congratulate all the graduates and their parents for putting up with them, putting them through the last 12, 13, 14, and hopefully no 15 years, but at any rate, I'm excited. I've got two that's going to be coming out, and I thank God for that, and then we're going to put them out the house, I mean, we're going to send them off to school as soon as we can. But again, congratulations to all of our graduates, and hopefully they're looking forward to going off to school somewhere and furthering their education. I know a high school graduation, I mean, a high school degree is good, a high school diploma is good, but you've got to further that education if you want to make it in this world today, and so we're going to be praying for all of our young people, and hopefully they'll go off and further their education. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. Do want to recognize the folks who, at Gaston City High School and the Arts Department, who put on a very, very good, very good event on Friday night and Saturday night, School House Rock. Took me back to the days when I was sitting there in my pajamas with the feet in them, eating Captain Crunch. They did a wonderful job. They did a wonderful job both nights, and, you know, again, do want to commend Mr. Bozeman and the work that he does with that group. Want to take this opportunity to thank the mayor. You know, a lot has been said over the last few weeks about the youth jobs program, but, you know, what kind of goes unsaid is that the mayor, the mayor took it upon himself to do that without us having to actually vote to pass any of that activity. So, you know, that says a lot about the city being proactive and realizing some of what needs to be done regarding youth employment levels. Little, a little factoid for us to walk away with as relates to the meaningfulness of a program like that. In 2000, the employment rate, meaning the number of youth between the ages of 16 and 18 that were employed, was right at about 46 percent. So that's almost half of the kids who were interested in employment back then were employed. In 2010, you know, using that same formula, that number is down to 27 percent. So you're talking three out of every 10 of them, almost, are working, but the other seven out of every 10 is not working. So this is a great opportunity, again, for the, for the city to step up and fill that void, and we've done so. So again, do want to, want to make mention of that. Also, we talked a little bit about youth smoking, and in particular, as it relates to outside of the premier cinemas at the mall. You know, we've asked the chief and the police department to address that issue. There is, you know, there appears to be some underage smoking that's going on there, so that's something that we've, we've asked them to address, and that's, it's important that we address that now, so that we don't have to deal with the public health risks associated with it later in life for these young folks. And the last thing I have is, I do want to issue, we had Renza Avery come here about a couple of months ago regarding the property behind him on the south side of Oakley Drive, where timber has been cut, and it's been cut for timber, leaving dead trees to fall onto the property of those folks on that side of Oakley Drive. Also, there is a, there is a swamp-like area that's a haven for pests that's adjacent to that as well. Again, you know, I do want the property owners to know that as a city, we're researching what, if anything, we can do to address that, and, you know, up to and including legal action. So I encourage the, I encourage the property owners to step up and address that sooner rather than later, and work with the city, because we're not interested in spending money on legal action there. But, but again, it's important, you know, for residents to take, take up their responsibility and be responsible in maintaining property if they own it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had no comment last Tuesday, so I'll make up for it today. First of all, I would like to join Derek in congratulating the mayor and the city of Gaston for stepping, for stepping forward with the youth summer program. It's very good. In addition to that, the extended hours for three of the recreational centers, you know, has been supported wholeheartedly by the mayor and the Parks, Parks Department. So, look, we do have three centers that will be open additional hours, and those are Saturday hours. However, Carrie got away from me today without me getting the exact times of those locations, but we will have that for you next Tuesday. But thank you, Mayor, for your support on those two programs.
I think it's nine to two.
Nine to two on Saturdays, at Walden Park, Carver, and East Gaston Recreation Center, starting immediately after school. The next thing is, congratulations to the, to the graduating seniors at Gaston City High School. Please attend that ceremony if you have the time on Friday night. And also to those, all those kids, congratulations to you, and in some cases, putting up with those parents for 12 years, so congratulations to you. The mayor is working on safe places in the city of Gaston. You know, with all the tornadoes that we've had all in the United States, and we're not even through, we're not halfway through the tornado season yet, and we've had destruction unheard of in these United States. You know, we just had another incident where I think 89 people were killed, hospital hit, you know, 2,000 homes destroyed, very similar to what we've had right here in our own state of Alabama. I just want to caution you, and the mayor's going to work on it, safe places. When you, when there's a prediction of bad weather, a tornadic weather hitting in our direction, if you live in unstable house, mobile home, or whatever, find yourself leaving that, those premises and coming to a place where it's safe. Look for, look for the EMA and the mayor to publish some of those places that you may be able to attend in the very near future. It's very important that you look out for your own safety. And I also want to give a shout out to Captain, maybe you can give me this, give us this policeman's name, that put himself in between a vicious dog that was attacking children and a little child this past week, and I'd like to just give kudos to that police officer for doing that, saving, in an attempt to save a child's life, because eventually he had to take the dog out. But he put himself in harm's way to protect the child. And that's sort of a, sort of gives you an idea of some, some of the police representation that we have in the city of Gaston. Captain, do you have his name? Okay. But it was in, it was, it was in the newspaper last week, and I'd just like to thank him for his valued effort and what he did for that child.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Oh, Captain, Lieutenant Moon knows, okay, thank you.
Mike O'Brien.
Mike O'Brien. Thank you, Mike O'Brien, for what you did for that child. Thank you very much. And the last thing I want to say is- And the last thing I want to say is, I had a resident, I had a resident come to me yesterday, and this is along the same lines of what David was speaking about up in North Gaston, and asked if there's anything that we can do to, as a city councilor, as a city, to encourage people to maintain their property. And of course, you know, if you've got a neighborhood association, you know, you can, you can, you can kind of encourage people to do things. Don't let your house fall down, mow your lawn, keep trash and debris out of the yard. But there's not much that we as a city council can do except to encourage people, encourage people to maintain your property. If there, there's no, there's no excuse, or there's no reason why, that you want to leave debris and old broken toys and things all in your front, you know, old broken down cars in your yard. You don't want to do that. So just encourage you to take care of your property. Your neighbors will appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Robert. I mean, Billy.
That was not a slight of tongue. I love you too, Bob. Thank you, sir.
I would like to brag on our public works and the fire department some. The mayor from O-Hatchee has called me twice and thanked me for, we sent a few crews down to O-Hatchee after the tornado down there, and they worked about, I don't know, a week or maybe a couple of days into the next week. Some of them volunteered, and some of them are still on our clock. But he was bragging on what a great job they did and how quick they got it and how good they were. And same way with the firemen, we had a truck on standby, I think, along with Jacksonville out in Webster's Chapel, New Liberty area for about a week, because their volunteer fire department had been gone. But we were glad to help out, and I've also had a few letters from some citizens in O-Hatchee. You know, sometimes city workers, they get a bad rap, but I can tell you, we've got some good people who do a good job, and they know how to do it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Due to Memorial Day next Monday, garbage routes will be collected on, Monday's garbage routes will be collected on Tuesday. Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday routes will be picked up on schedule.
Next week.
Hmm?
Next week.
Next week. Yeah. Next Monday. If there's not anything else, I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
So moved.
So this meeting is adjourned.